Good evening and welcome to our 5th March Board 2025 City Council meeting. I want to begin by welcoming Pam Kilramigan as our new city administrator. And thank you Pam.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll do roll call?
Yes, council member Bee Hill.
Here.
Mayor Shmenti.
Present.
Vice Mayor Sharado.
Present.
Councilmember Verolio.
Present.
And Councilmember Makata is absent.
So with that, would you please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There was nothing, we did not have closed session, so there was nothing to report on a closed session. Moving on to item four, approval of the agenda as posted or amended. Pam? Do you have anything with the agenda? The agenda is, okay.
The agenda is, okay.
All right. The only thing that I would suggest is that we table 7A, the proclamation. Our girls' basketball team is in Melbury, Melby at West San Francisco in the state playoffs tonight. I did attend the board meeting last, the Bret Hart board meeting last night to read the proclamation and asked Principal Hope if we could have the coach and a few girls next on the 18th so we can read the proclamation.
Do you know the sort of thing?
No, I bet it's not gonna, they haven't started yet, they probably started seven. Yes. So any other changes to the agenda?
Nope.
Hearing none, is there a motion?
So moved, sorry.
There's been a motion and a second? Any other comments? Hearing none? Michelle, roll call?
Bee Hill?
Aye.
Shmenti?
Aye.
Sharado?
Aye.
And Verolio?
Aye.
Public comment, the public may address the council on any item of public interest, not otherwise on the agenda, that is within the jurisdiction of the city. No action may be taken. Matters to be addressed may be referred to city staff or placed on the subsequent meeting agenda. Speakers are limited to five minutes per person. Any public comment? Okay, we'll go.
Nope.
Fight over the podium.
Please state your name and.
Good evening, my name's Veronica Matildee and I live here in the Angels Camp and I am here representing ACBA, which is Angels Camp Business Association. I am inviting and announcing that Angels Camp Business Association, along with Destination Angels Camp and the city, are hosting a State of the City meeting on the 20th of this month at 8:30 in the morning at the Bret Hart Theater. This is obviously open to the public and we really hope that we get great attendance. The invitations will be going out and the word will be getting out, but we did want to address the council first and foremost. And I hope that all of you will put it on your agenda and be able to attend.
So the 20th, 8:30 AM?
20th?
Yep.
8:30 AM Bret Hart Theater.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Will it be recorded for those who can't attend?
I hope so. Because I can't attend.
The goal is, yes, that's what we're doing at Bret Hart so that can post it afterwards.
Thanks.
Hopefully we'll have it on YouTube. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Trisha Hawkins, I live in City of Angels. My bench up front, the break is worse. It hasn't gotten fixed. I brought it up once before.
Where's the bench exactly again? Right up front?
Firehouse?
Here. Station. And the break is worse than Shmenti. You really can't sit on it now. It's a hole. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's taking care of it.
Thank you. I like the nodding, thank you. Anyone else?
It's me. Do you actually need me to turn this on? I think I'm loud enough. Hi, my name is Aisha Williamson. I'm the brand new executive director over at Sierra Hope. I think most are probably quite familiar with us, but I just kind of wanted to do a little recap. Jerika Dodd recently retired after 30 years. I've been there for about two months, slowly transitioning and working my way in. For anybody who might not know, we provide transitional housing, we do supportive case management, permanent supportive housing, we have a food bank, we have, we just refurbished the lower level of our transitional house, which will now be recuperated here in post-hospitalization shelter beds. And we just keep adding on and expanding. All of that aside, we are mostly based right here in Angels Camp and primarily the clients that we serve are in Calveras County. We do extend a little bit beyond that and we have a lot of collaborative partners, obviously with ACBA and some other folks that are on kind of our neighboring counties and all that they do, but our primary focus is right here. Our offices are right here, all of our case management is right here. And something that I was kind of hoping that I might be able to at least just put out there and float out there for maybe a future agenda item is, we would love to collaborate more with the city and anyone else that could be those possible partners. As we're growing to meet the need, I know that there still is, although I see the fencing just literally came down, the former city hall. I know that there might have been a past conversation that was had with my predecessor about the possibility of what could be maybe something wonderful with us collaborating, that we could maybe take over the building, rent it from the city, find an opportunity, maintain the historical founding of the building while at the same time growing to meet the need and also giving us some additional office space. I think that that would be nice to have something that would then be occupied and maintained by us, but there could be definitely a wonderful opportunity to partner. So I just wanted to at least introduce myself to everyone and say hello.
Well, thank you and welcome and good luck. And please Pam, and please exchange contact information and so Pam can keep you informed about what we're doing and how we're moving forward with our master plan for our facility.
Perfect.
So thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, so moving on to item six, the consent agenda. Item eight, road closure, youth parade. Is there any comment?
Nope.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve?
I'm going to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
There's been a motion and a second. Michelle?
Bee Hill?
Aye.
Shmenti?
Aye.
Sharado?
Aye.
And Verolio?
Aye.
So again, we have tabled 7A, the proclamation. Moving on to 7B, Amy, an update on your, on the.
Mayor, council members, as you've probably noticed, Mark Twain has returned to the park. He was retired last Thursday. The frogs will rejoin him on St. Patrick's Day, he will be, it will be put back on. Park horse trail surfacing is 50% done. Last concrete is poured today. The outdoor gym was resurfaced. Trees are on their way on the 15th. We met with tobacco-free Calaveras and they would like to have the park become a non-smoking park and we'll bring that to you on your agenda on the 18th. And on April 3rd, we'll probably be asking you to consider dates that you would like to have the ground opening of the park. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Did you happen to get a photo of today because there were like 50 trucks down there? I've never seen so much activity down there. It was really impressive and I know because the rain's coming, but I wanted to stop and take a photo and I was like, I'll go back and take a photo and then I never got to my house.
I didn't, darn, but I did film Mark Twain being at ACBA. So, yes, they're pushing really hard. It's a challenging schedule to finish by the 2nd, but the last thing that was most concerned was the rain, which was the cement they finished today. So other than the sliding on the amphitheater, that's the other thing that might get interfered with by rain. So they're pushing.
Obviously we're getting lots of back-to-back rain.
Any other council member comments? Any public comments?
I always worry about shade.
What did he say?
I said, I always worry about the shade.
No, it's not.
Trisha Hawkins, again. It's about the hydroseeding. I'd like to know, Amy, if I may, exactly what's going to be hydroseeding?
Okay.
Okay, on the map, if you could point it out for me because then there's a question about it.
If you could pull that side plant down. There you go. Keep going, you go, stop right there. So basically, we're going to re-hydroseed the place that used to be grassed. So this will, sorry. That's all right. This will all be hydroseeded here.
Okay, that's what I thought. Did you check into, Boyer is listed as the person doing the hydroseeding?
We're checking the contractor.
He's, okay, on the schedule you posted on the site, across from that is the subcontractor that's doing the project that's listed. Boyer is listed as hydroseeding. Is he licensed to hydroseeding?
I will check for you.
Okay.
Because Alley Tree Service, who is actually a landscape, a licensed landscape person, I believe is actually going to do that.
Okay, well, that's fine then. The other thing, did you check into how long it will take? I did a rough estimate and for that grass to be part worthy, it's going to be till the beginning of August. With hydroseeding, you have two weeks of a lot of watering and there's a lot of watering going on the first two weeks, within this seven to 10 range, they start to germinate. Then you have to keep Pablo up there for four to six weeks. After that, it's three to four months of light traffic and dogs, cats, people randomly walking will hurt the hydroseeding until that point. So my rough estimate is August. I don't understand unless you fence it, you can't rope it, kids will go under, animals get there at the night. I'm just worried that the park isn't going to be viable the way people think when you open it, when they find out you can't walk on all this and it's going to be July, it's, I, my, my rough estimate was the first week in August by doing all the calculations for topsoil has to come in, that all the weeds have to get taken out of the dirt before, then topsoil has to be put in. Then you have to do the hydroseeding, then it's the two weeks of constant watering, three to four times a day, which is a cost. And then after that, you go less watering and light footwork. Well, no, then it's four to six weeks of stay off it. Then it goes to three to four months of light footwork, which takes us into August. Was that, was that given to you as information on the hydroseeding?
So if your question is, can we open the park without the hydroseeding? For everybody to know on topic, the answer is yes, you can fence it off. I don't know if you've been up to Murphy's lately, Murphy's Park, they recently hydroseeded and that park this weekend was swamped with people, but not in the areas that were hydroseeded where they put up safety fencing, if necessary. But we are going to be monitoring the hydroseeding to see when it, we can be able to walk on it or not walk on it with assistance from Alley Tree Service, the landscaper telling us. But yeah, is it possible that when we open that park, there will be some fencing keeping people off the hydroseeded areas? Answer is that is a possibility, yes.
Okay, I also have a question. The bank, this upper, that's Steve Hill, is that getting hydroseeded or what's getting done there?
There is.
Because there are erosion and rain and just things coming down in vibrations. That hill has been excavated on and everything, so I just wondered if there's anything going to be done to mitigate.
The exposure, exposed areas will be treated with erosion control. It may or may not be hydroseed, but there will be erosion control to make sure that we do not have a blood issue or any part of a clip that will get on top of us, yeah.
Okay. My other question to you is, what is the blue around the children's play area?
That rubberized place, that is actually rubberized material and it is supposed to represent water. There's a frog in it and it's sort of like a creek quote unquote.
Do you know what the rubberized material is made of?
Yes, I do.
Yeah, didn't you tell me?
Do you?
What's the question?
The question is if it's made of recycled tires, it's carcinogenic.
I am not aware of any carcinogenic ingredients in that.
Schools, okay. You don't, what is it made of then?
I can find out exactly what it's made of and get back to you on that. I know that we have a health and safety inspector who specializes only in playgrounds who cleared that as safely and I doubt he would have done that even though it's carcinogens in there, but I will be happy to check on that and get back to you.
Okay, the last thing, you told me there'd be some sort of a covert or barrier to stop cars from going through to the playground.
Yes.
I drove by, there was nothing there at this point.
They have changed that design, they do not have a drainage anymore, they will have, I will check with them on curving. My understanding is there's a curve there.
Cars jump curves.
Okay, well, I can take direction from the city council if they would like to have additional barriers put up out of concerns for safety and we'll be happy to address that for you.
Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you.
I want to, I want to pause for a moment.
I forgot, I neglected to ask if we had anybody online, Michelle.
We have two people online, but there's no questions.
Okay, I want to go back to see if they have had any public comment. Can we just check with that, please?
No public comment.
Okay, any other comments regarding the park from the public or?
Hi, Danny Benson with Calveras Public Health, Tobacco Prevention Program. We just, I'm also joined by my colleague Savannah Paxwell. We just want to say that we're excited to work with you guys on the park and help you make a smoke-free zone for kids and all adults and that we will be tabling at the opening of the park to share some of our resources and not just with tobacco prevention, but all of our other programs, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for coming this evening.
Take the comments.
Any comments, Michelle, from?
No comments online.
Any other comments from council, the public? Hearing none, we will move on to item C, approving a purchase of AMR equipment. Chris? Thank you, Amy.
I am here to ask your permission to move forward with the purchase, I should say, the first half of the purchase for our automatic meter-reading equipment, meters, software and hardware. The total cost of just south of $100,000, but it will deplete our budget amount for this year and then we'll, once we move into the next, next year's budget, we'll be moving forward with another order and just start adding installation.
So Chris, are you going to wait for both orders to come in before you send out the RFP for installation?
No, so we're going to go ahead and start putting that art, finishing up that RFP because we've already started it and then get it out with the intent of not actually starting the work until next budget year.
Okay.
But the idea is because these meters are so far out as far as getting them, once we order them, it's like seven days. So the idea is to get as many as we can here, so once we start installing them, we don't run out of them before the next order comes in.
And then RFP is request for proposals, so when we go out, we'll ask, we're trying to solicit contractors to bid on the installation of our meters. Our meters are one of our identified projects for our capital improvement. The council probably last fall looked at a number of projects that we had and identified five or six to be used with our enterprise fund dollars, the dollars that we've been collecting on our water, wastewater. And we've allocated about $9 million worth of projects. Those were those dollars back then, so there is that reserve to help cover. But one of the projects that's been a priority with the council for a number of years is installation of automatic meter readers. You ask me why? Because it takes an inordinate amount of time, staff time to go and read meters and we're hoping that, you know, it'll become one person reading the meters or two if they divide it into areas, which will free up staff to take on other projects. And so we are truly excited about this project and the project that we talked about at our last meeting, the looping of Mark Twain in the council, around Mark Twain School. Any other questions from council?
I don't think, no, I don't have any questions other than, yeah.
Any questions from the public?
Nothing online.
Nothing, thank you, Michelle. Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the expenditure?
I'll make the motion too.
I'll second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any other discussion from council, from the public? Hearing none, Michelle?
Bee Hill?
Aye.
Shmenti?
Aye.
Sharado?
Aye.
Verolio?
Aye.
You know, I just, thank you. I just, I wonder Pam, if you and Chris could schedule a time maybe to meet with Scott if he hasn't, because I know that you've been meeting with, I'm not volunteering, but I think it'd be good for you to get up this evening, our CMT projects. I know that you've been working with Dave, wondering that last week, you told me, so that, so you kind of have an idea of where we're going and the direction that we're taking.
Yeah, we had a few conversations this week about this agenda, I was comfortable with it.
Good, thank you. I appreciate it and thanks staff for taking time. Thank you. Okay, we're going to, we're going to move forward to 7D, approval of request for qualifications for on-call engineering services.
Yes.
Is this Michelle's item?
This is me. I have all the different hats, so I'm going to get up.
That's okay, you don't have to get up.
So we had a three-year contract with our previous engineer for Dewberry Engineering. That expires on June 30th of 2025, so we are getting started early on requesting for qualifications. We'll post this on public purchase. We can invite engineering firms, they can go on to public purchase and place a bid. We have a schedule so that we make sure that everything's in place and we can bring the, you know, we go through the selection process, the interviewing, bring to council once legal has reviewed the new contract and to the June 3rd meeting, so then we can accept that and have everything in place July 1st, when the current engineering contract expires. One thing we're looking at doing differently that's in this RFQ than the three years ago is to open it up and select multiple candidates. So it may not just be Dewberry doing the city engineering work, the traffic roads and also water, wastewater, we may split that up and have different firms available and also on-call firms. So little different approach, I think it's good for the city and opens up to be able to not be tied down to one engineering firm.
So any questions from council?
I have a question. 10 years ago, I think it was, we went from, we started outsourcing our engineering, we had in-house engineering, we changed that because we didn't have enough projects to support, the economy was kind of in the dumps. Do we have a, any kind of a number or a threshold that if we start spending, you know, the dollars above a certain amount, they'll reconsider bringing back in-house engineering? Or has that, has that, has that discussion happened or?
That discussion hasn't happened and we definitely could bring that back and take a look at that, but currently the engineers we're looking at mainly are capital projects and then the projects that we have currently with COG and Caltrans and then city, city engineered projects. So we definitely could look at that, kind of like what we did with the building inspector COG recently, bringing that back in-house and look at an annual dollar amount.
Now I'm just curious if there's a certain number that makes sense to bring, but I don't know what that number is.
Yeah.
You know, bringing that city inspector back on board has been a blessing for us and he's doing a great job. Michelle, one question I have, is this the organization of that? If we let out more than one contract? So the contracts would be for specific tasks and if there was an overlapping, would there be language in those contracts where they have to communicate and play nice in the sandbox?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and currently, right now with Dewberry, they assign task orders for each project that they're working on. So we have the master contract for three years and then annually, they set up the projects, working with the city administrator and set up task orders for each project. And then they have a general task order for like the city engineer. We're currently, right now, they don't have anybody in-house and so they're contracting that out. Aaron Brusatori, who was here at last meeting, has been our city engineer for a few years, but he is with a different firm than Dewberry. So instead of having Dewberry sourcing that out and paying markup fees and whatnot, we would just contract directly with them.
Correct. Perfect. Any other comments from council? Any public comments? Anyone online? Anyone here?
Nobody online.
Okay. And is there a motion to approve going out?
So moved, sorry.
There's been a first, a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Any public? Michelle, I want to call you Rose here.
It's okay.
Hearing none, roll call.
Bee Hill?
Aye.
Shmenti?
Aye.
Sharado?
Aye.
And Verolio?
Aye.
Back to 7E, this is an item that's been on our agenda a couple of times. It's resolution number 2512, approve temporary construction easement agreement between the City of Angels Camp and Pacific Gas and Electric. Pam?
The city of Angels Camp, the vice mayor of the city council, here. Okay, there you go. So what happened was the last council meeting, this item was brought back.
Move your leg away, 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 away. No, we'll just move it here. I'm the gentleman that I am.
Thank you.
Just like that, be fine.
Okay, there you go. Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So the last council meeting, what happened was, council had requested for staff to bring this back and it has to do with two items. One had to do with the contract amount and as you can see, the contract amount had been revised to 1750. And PGA is supposed to be online right now because they would like to explain further about the helicopter issue, which council was concerned about and they would like to address that themselves tonight.
Pam, you go ahead.
Hold, hold for just a minute so we can increase the volume, please.
Can you go ahead and speak again and see?
Yes, my name is, is Justin Hundy, construction leader for this, this is our project and I'm ready to answer any questions or concerns that you guys have.
So we had a question and you were going to do some research about how many times the helicopter may be flying over?
On the flight path.
On the flight path?
Yeah, so, you know, we will be flying, we, we will not be flying there much, but when we do, it's going to be the year of 2026 and on a, on the, on the busiest day, it might come in about, about 20 times a day, but, you know, but for the majority of the contract, we will not be flying there.
And then?
We're just going to, we're just going to, we're just going to, we're just going to use it for a two, three-month time frames.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. So the helicopter will be landing and taking off just approximately two or three months?
Yes, there will be two times where we, where we will fly two to three months in this timeframe that we have, you know, been at the airport. So it's not, it's definitely not, it's definitely not going to be full-time and it's not. it's not gonna be until the year, 2026 is as soon as, that it will be the, the fall of 2026 will be the, the earliest that we will land there.
And I noticed on the map that the inbound and outbound is gonna be off of Highway 49, correct?
That's what we decided, bless.
Yes, that's where we will drive in from. And we, we do plan on having our traffic people there that will open the gates for us, so we will not have to stop and we're gonna make it as safe as we, as we can.
And then Scott, we tabled because we thought you had some questions about the contract or situation? I don't know, not putting you on the spot, I'm just...
I did. The initial contract, the rent wasn't, didn't make any sense at all. And then this rent is a lot better. So I appreciate that effort.
And then my only other question, and I'm fine with moving forward if we can add an addendum, I, I would like to see some language regarding opening and closing that main gate off of Highway 49 and, and have it in, have it in the contract in case a cow does get hit, there needs to be someone to take responsibility besides the rancher. So, if you're okay with that, I think we could move forward. Hoping with the passage of this, with that addendum, that the PG&E will be responsible for opening and closing gates as they move through.
That, yes, I am fine with that. We will add, we will add that in. Thank you.
Well, are you, is that okay?
Yeah, to that point, Mike, the contract does say that they'll put in a gate capable preventing cattle from entering the gravel road and on the areas, that it'll be locked at all times except for purposes of ingress and egress. And there's also an indemnification that indemnifies the city from any wrongful negligence act.
Right, but I worry about the rancher because the gate that they're gonna go in is that main gate off of 49, correct?
Correct.
That takes into that spray field. So if that's their entrance, that's a gate that's gonna be shared both by the rancher and PG&E to go through. And the cows will probably be in that portion of the field. Correct?
Yes.
Okay. So...
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
There's another stipulation that staff had brought up and it has to do with the insurance. And we would like to make sure that the insurances, by asking the city attorney here, if the insurances that are stipulated in the agreement is in compliance with benchmark standards, we need to say that, do we have enough threshold? Because it says there right now a million.
Yes, it is sufficient and, you know, looking at these contracts, the insurance coverage can be all over the board. So it boils down to like what's reasonable in this situation. A million dollars seems to be a reasonable threshold for this kind of easement.
Okay. Any other comments from council? Any comments from the public?
I have a question. The helicopter was a good idea.
He didn't actually answer that, he just said it's 20 times a day for, what was it?
Two or three months.
Two or three months, yeah.
Who's it gonna fly over?
We can ask. So, how, can you, if you do know the flight path of the helicopter? Is it gonna go across the highway towards Ford?
So, so the flight path will be, will be, will be going west and we're gonna go where there's the least amount of homes and, and cattle, right? You know, so our, 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 this will know the, will know the flight path. And basically, we will not fly near homes, we will not fly over homes, we fly the path of least resistance. Resistance. So basically, we are gonna fly to our line, which is due north. And then once we get to that line, then we'll just fly down our line, if that, if that makes sense.
That does make sense.
It does, yeah. Because where that line is, is, it is west. You showed me.
So their transmission line that they're working on is directly north from this location across our property.
Okay.
So they will be flying across the spray field till they get to their line and then to the west.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
So it's not going anywhere near the little properties?
Right. Property, definitely. Any other questions? Any questions, Michelle?
Nothing online.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve what they meant that we had some language regarding closure of the gates?
I'm sorry, do you ask for public comment?
I did, I thought I just did.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
I'll move the motion, I'll move the item.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Any questions? Hearing that?
Bee Hill?
Aye.
Shemante?
Aye.
Chirato?
Aye.
And Brolio?
Aye.
Thank you. Pam, we're on item eight, your report.
Yeah. So first of all, I'd like to thank everybody, the agencies and council for being very welcoming and staff as well. They've, the figurative expression of drinking from a fire hose has been very true, but I'm enjoying it a lot and I'm learning a lot as we go. Over the past week that I've started, I have met with, with DAC and regarding the March 20th event that we are about to venture. And I have also met with COG. And I've spoken on the phone with our museum boat, Martin Huberty?
Alberdy.
Alberdy, yes. And so, I'm, I'm right now doing my best to connect with everybody and catch up.
Well, thank you. Thank you. And again, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Moving on to council reports. Mr. Brolio?
Did I have Utica? Because Joel and Karen were both back east of Washington DC, so that was postponed. That's one thing I've had since the last meeting.
Cheryl?
I was in Washington DC last week. That was interesting. There's a lot going on. I've met with a lot of agencies. We met with the Bureau of Reclamation about some awards that we were given for Utica on the canals. So when we shut the canals down for the month of November, we do new concrete on them and we weren't able to do that because we didn't get the money and we wanted to know, where's our money? We want our money. So, that was also kind of a, everything was a little bit stressed out in DC. The Secretary of Interior hadn't been named yet or confirmed and so, and they weren't in place. We met with the FERC folks about our exemption status. We're gonna turn in our application in June for that, for the two hydro plants to come out from under federal oversight and just remain with the state. We just got some updates on that. And then I met with the US Forest Service head, the chief of, yeah, Randy Moore. And we met with him three hours after he resigned. So, that was a good meeting. It was probably the best meeting we had. It was complete transparency, talked a lot about forest health. We talked a lot about forest mitigation, how do we clean up all these areas, especially around critical infrastructure and our communities. And he gave us some really great advice and really the things that we can activate and things that we can call upon immediately to start doing this as prohibitive and we don't have to wait for an emergency to do it. So that was an excellent meeting and I'm so glad that we got to meet with him. And I think, I think he said this was his last meeting in that position and he'd been with the Forest Service for 45 years.
Oh my gosh.
So that was good. We also met with Senator Schiff's office. Senator Pidiot was not able to meet with us, his office, which was unfortunate because they have a FERC person in his office and that was unfortunate. And we also met with our Congressman McLean Talk and we had a great meeting with him. So, it was a very busy week. And then the other half of the week, I was there for work.
Well, thank you for doing that.
Yeah.
We appreciate you having me.
And then we were really there to, to attend the Aqua Conference, which is the Association of California Water Agencies. And they have all the California Water Agencies go to DC and they have all these different folks come in and talk to them, like FERC comes in and the US Forest Service comes in, gives presentations. We had one on cyber and water, which was also my organization that came in and did that. So it was, it was a great week of also education. CCWED was there, so you get to kind of network with all these other water agencies and so that was, it was great. We met with the US Forest Service, with the Tahoe Basin folks. So it was great, yeah. And they have flumes too. So, they're in the same book.
Scott?
Yeah, it's been, well, it's been a month, but we, we had a COG meeting and we had, we approved that EV report. It was pretty much a general consensus that the report as it is, it's not really, it's an implementation plan, but it's not really implementational. Implement, implement, how do you, what do you, what's the word? But you really can't implement it because it's just, it would be way, way too much. But it's a step, we at least, we've, we've checked the box and we're doing what we're supposed to do. One thing that interesting came up, I think Caltrans talked about it, was there, there is grant money now for, I would say Fire Wise or Fire Safe, I'm not sure what the name of the program is, but along those lines, I, I met with my neighbor today, my house backs up to 80 acre environment conservation. So he can't do anything with the property, but he has to keep it cleared. And in one storm, he lost 40 trees. He's out, he's done 21 burns, this is too much for him, he needs equipment, he needs help. And given that it's in the conservation and that's for fire prevention only, it's really no benefit to him other than that, is there something we can do to help, maybe a private citizen on property that's adjacent to a neighborhood? You know, so that's, there's some interesting questions about this and we really need to...
Yeah, and one of the things that the Fire, the US Forest Service chiefs, he said that they really are trying to activate so that you can cross agency lines without having to pull all these different agencies in and because it's to do fire breaks and it's to do all these things, so I thought that was really interesting. So if we're seeing it there and hopefully we're seeing it in other areas too, where we can just activate to get this done.
I believe Governor Newsom today just got away with CECLs.
CECL was gone.
CECL was gone for any fire prevention, I don't know what it all entailed, but it's fire to deal, no more CECLs?
Yeah.
Okay.
And also I saw that the President started, or he was saying something about logging and that's something I was really touting when I was there, was like, we need to get back to logging, we need to get back into the business of thinning the forests, but there's no companies that want to put in a sawmill and put millions of dollars in a sawmill at four years from now that they have to rip it out. So there's that whole thing, but I felt like I was following market SPI to all his meetings, like he was literally in front of us, meeting the same people. So, so there's a lot of activity around this and I feel like it's gonna, needs to trickle down all the way into cities and...
It sounds like it's already here as far as the grants are available through the state.
Yeah.
So, you know, how do we wrap our arms around this?
Yeah.
How do we come up with an overall plan?
Yep. And, and not have to jump through hoops with every agency, I think that's the key too.
Right.
We just have to be able to get the work done and who do we, who do we have do it and, yeah. So, it's good, let's get it done.
And that's it for me.
The only thing I have to report is I attended Jerry's retirement party. Jerry has been a true asset and friend to us and to a lot of folks in Calaveras County. He will be missed. Sarah Hope is in good hands and, and we look forward to partnering and seeing how we can better serve our folks. So thank you for that. And that's all I have to report. Michelle, calendar?
Rose will bring the calendars next week.
Rose will bring that calendar, the 18th. Okay, that's fine.
So I do know that I'm not gonna be here the first meeting of April.
Okay.
And I'll be missing COG as well. And then I'm not gonna be here the first meeting in May and I'm gonna be missing COG as well. But that's it for the whole year.
Okay.
That's just, that's, I just have two work trips that are back-to-back on that.
So COG, COG twice.
Yeah, so sorry.
Were you the alternate or was that the alternate?
Somebody is.
I think I...
I thought he was.
It could be I.
I think it could be.
Thought you were.
We'll find out.
We'll find out.
I do have a FERC meeting tomorrow. I do have a FERC meeting for Utica to kind of go over all of this so that we can present it at the end of the month to Utica.
Future agenda items? Does anyone have any?
Oh, on the Fire Wise presentation that we've asked the fire chief to give, I would really appreciate it if it's not the first week in April because I won't be here and it was something that I had requested.
And I know as you get up to speed, something that Scott has asked and we've been, we tabled until you got onboard is just looking at our roads, condition of our, our roads?
Yes.
So why don't you get up to speed with that? And then, I don't know how everyone feels, but would it be appropriate to hold a study session to talk about goals, not only for Pam, but for us in the city? You know, do it more as a study session as opposed to in part of a regular meeting? So we can give clear directions?
That I think would be good for her too.
That's on my, go ahead, yeah, that was one of my, I'll put a check mark next to it.
Okay.
Is to go over, revisit all the strategic plans and what we already have in the queues and what we need to get queued up and having to put us in the spot.
And Scott, you'd like for you to go through all, you know, you can check in on the strategic plan, but to see where we're at with all of that.
Right. And give solid goals for everybody and where, what we're after.
Yeah.
So we wait for Isabel on the 18th to be here to schedule that meeting and make sure that she can attend?
We can send out an email, because it'll be a special meeting, right? On the suit, it's gonna be a special.
We'll reach out to all of us.
Pam, can we reach out to all of us?
Well, we'd like, oh, let's talk about time of day, afternoon?
Just depends on the day.
Just depends on the day.
Afternoon works better for me.
It's better.
I can get my dummies.
DC closes at two, so I need to have a...
Yeah, I can only split out in the afternoon. My mornings are normally pretty.
Okay.
And then are you, are you good or? I got some.
Oh no, I'm good.
Yeah, okay. And then I would just love to hit, and I don't know if it's legal or however we do it, but I would just kind of like to hit on the do's and don'ts of public comments. Do we engage, not engage? Do we just take names and numbers? Do we respond, not respond? I just don't know if we handle it the same every time, if that makes sense. So I would just, I would like to kind of put that to bed so, so we're, we're the same every time.
I'm guessing Pam can give us very good guidance on that.
Oh, probably.
Well, I'll do, we'll do a staff report for next meeting.
That'd be great.
That'd be awesome. Thank you.
I believe there's some guidance.
I think it's in our wheelhouse.
Handbook.
Handbook. You can look at the handbook for specifics.
Yeah.
Any other agenda items? Would the public like to suggest any agenda items? Pam, um, Pam?
Nothing online.
Veronica? I guess you...
You got it.
So we got curb, gutter and sidewalks. In the intersection up the grade road and down 49 and then over by Max Pizza. Where's the landscaping? We had landscaping...
It's part of that second part, so, but yes, it would be great to get an update on Caltrans.
Yeah, and I know there's rules and regulations for whatever. My suggestion, just the suggestion is hardscape, no water, so no expense there and very little maintenance, but something. It's got a long...
It's wrapped into, there's another Caltrans project that's coming and, right? Am I right? Yeah.
So there was another, there was another phase from US Bank-ish, well, no, it's a little past there. Either way, the rest of the way into downtown and there's another phase that goes out towards expense and towards Capella also. There was multiple phases of, of sidewalks, sidewalks.
So it would be great to get a Caltrans update on all the projects for Angels Camp, where we're at with them and that's included in that part.